Good evening.
Hello.
Hey, everybody.
Okay, we're gonna go ahead and call the meeting of the Bloomington City Council to order. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great.
Yes.
And at this point, whoa, excuse me, I wonder if we could have a pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. We could have a follow-up with a moment of silence. Thank you. Okay, thank you very much. Madam Clerk, could you call the roll, please?
Yes, thank you. Councilmember Mathie.
Here.
Councilmember Boland.
Here.
Councilmember Milowambe.
Here.
Councilmember Emig.
Present.
Councilmember Painter.
Here.
Councilmember Corio.
Here.
Councilmember Black.
Here.
Councilmember Crable.
Here.
Councilmember Bray.
Here.
Mayor Renner.
Here. Thank you very much. And because this is so critical and so important and obviously on everyone's mind and the reason that we're meeting this way, we have a COVID-19 update by our city manager that we're gonna go ahead and start out with. Mr. Gleason, would you please continue or begin? Excuse me.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This was suggested that I do a COVID update at the beginning of the meetings. We know it's not uncommon to lose some of the community members that are participating, so didn't want to wait to include these at the end under my city manager comments. And I also have those, but these are gonna be COVID comments at the beginning. I just wanted to share with the council members in the community that the CDBG funding that we receive every single year, there's additional funding that we've received, and that amount is $329,144. You still do not have the official sign-off from HUD. The target date for council consideration would be June 8th. And the plan would be for the annual allocation and the new funds, the CARES Act funds. Funding has to cover unmet needs, not being covered from other sources in coordination with local, state, and federal response. And then also, this definitely will be a discussion with the council prior to the agenda item that we're tentatively scheduling for June 8th. Next item, quick update on finances. Finance Director Scott Rathbun does this at the end of the month, but this is going to be a COVID financial impacts, quick comment, that the $4 million that exists above the GFOA reserve recommendation and early projections, that we could close the books on FY '20. Our fiscal year '20 ended on April 30th, but we won't have a true and accurate picture until June or July of this year. So again, the $4 million that exists above the GFOA recommendation on reserves, we could close having used $2 million of that $4 million. But that's yet to be determined. We'll know more in the next couple of months. Next item, reopen Illinois. Governor Pritzker talked about this. He saw the different regions throughout the state. We have actually, over the past couple of weeks, have partnered with the city of Peoria and Peoria County, who truly are the ones that have run the lead on this, along with other heart of Illinois counties. There's 11 total that have proposed to Governor Pritzker that there's an opportunity to create a sub-region, this heart of Illinois region that would include the 11 counties. Trying to address our local business needs by identifying differences in our region that currently extends all the way north to Rockford. This is based on medical data and medical capacities within our sub-region that we're proposing. And when I talk about medical capacities, I'm talking about the hospital networks in Peoria, the hospital networks that are in Bloomington Normal, and we feel that we have an opportunity if there was to be that hotspot or that spike as we are reopening. Mayor Renner is completing a letter asking Governor Pritzker to consider the sub-region, and there's more details to come. Couple more items, pools on the Fourth of July. The city in conjunction with the town of Normal made this decision last week, and we think that it's very likely that the decision's gonna be made for us at the state level, but it's something that we just felt was our reality amid COVID-19. But like many things, you look for an opportunity in things that you didn't necessarily expect and have directed staff to fill out a RFP for demo of the O'Neill Pool. We know that this is a project in the next couple of years and might as well seize an opportunity, if you will, with this COVID-19 pandemic closing a lot of recreational facilities like that. Let's see, last item, Public Works Bulk Rush Crews are back at 100% with staggered starting times. Safety first, obviously, because if something was to go wrong with those crews, really we'd get beyond bulk and brush and it becomes garbage. And I've mentioned in the past that that becomes the disaster within the disaster. And appreciate the approach out of all those involved to get those crews back to work at 100%. That was it for now. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Gleason. We appreciate that. And we're gonna move right along next to our recognitions and appointments. Madam Clerk, did you want to read the list? And again, these are people who have been appointed. There's no action. This is just after the fact. Is that correct, Madam Clerk?
That is correct. With Board of Fire and Police Commissioners, we had Ellen Trader Conklin and Michael Rudisil. Board of Zoning Appeals, we had Victoria Harris, Tyler Noonan, Michael Riviera Jr., and Michael Straza. Building Board of Appeals, Jeffrey Brown, Mike Holderby, Jerry Keller, John Meek, Michael Rake, Larry Stevic, John Weber. Citizens Beautification Committee, Erica Larkin, Robin Vandermay. Cultural Commission, Merrill Brown, Angelique Rackey. Historic Preservation Commission, Georgine Chisel, Leah Klein, Paul Charnett. And for the Housing Authority Board, we had Barb Atkins and Karen Scott.
Thank you very much. We move right along to public comment. Madam Clerk, do we have people who have called in and are prepared to give public comment?
We do. We have actually two that registered, the first being Becky Altic and the second John Reed. John Reed has not called in yet, but Becky Altic is ready.
Becky, can you hear us? Oh.
I can hear you.
Oh. Go ahead.
Yes, I can hear you.
You have up to three minutes.
Okay. I'd like to talk to you about the current change in the Public Works employee's schedule. Up until this week, the employees have been basically split into two teams, Team A and Team B, working alternating weeks. This was done to decrease the exposure of the employees amongst each other, as well as decrease the exposure for COVID, is what I'm talking about, as well as decreasing the exposure from vendors and to allow time over the weekends for ample disinfecting of the work areas. That changed this week when all Public Works employees were to return to their original schedules of five days a week. I'm curious as to why this occurred, considering the fact that plenty of work is being done and accomplished, that the city is not in any worse condition, excuse me, and that I don't see that the Public Works employees are more or less essential than any other city of Bloomington employees. The current recommendation is that if two Public Works employees are in a truck, both are required to wear a mask, and that there is a 30-minute to 60-minute period between shifts, if there are shifts in their specific department, set aside for disinfecting. My concern is that there is an increased risk just based on the type of work that these employees do, given that they have increased exposure from both people and inanimate objects that can carry the COVID virus. Likewise, with the return of seasonal workers, it takes our permanent city of Bloomington Public Works employees and increases their exposures to outside factors. I feel that it best that this is an inconsistent application of the rule. If the city of Bloomington firmly believes that it is safe for all the Public Works employees to return to work, then it should be safe for all city of Bloomington employees to come back to work. I think that by segregating this out and making an application of rules for one set of rules for boot collar workers and another set of rules for white collar workers, it really leads to an us and them type of a culture, which is inconsistent, I feel, with the city of Bloomington's core beliefs, specifically with integrity, which is to act consistent with your professional standards and to act in an ethical manner, and the core belief of responsibility, which is to take care of your equipment, yourself, and your city resources. I was wondering if you could explain to me why there's a rush when there is only three weeks left in this month, what the rush is to push forward on this one, or when Governor Pritzker has already said that we are in line with moving to Phase 3 at the end of this month.
Thank you very much, Becky. Just to let you know, our policy is not to respond to public comment. That typically is what the mayor's open house is for, but of course, given the nature of what we have here, I have not had a mayor's open house in the last couple of sessions, but we will try to get back to you. Is Mr. Reed on the line, Madam Clerk?
He is not. And also, I just wanted to point out, Mayor, there were actually three slides of appointments that needed read, and I only had one of them, but I've got both of them. So if we wrap up public comment, if it's okay, I'll, we'll jump back and I'll finish reading the others. Sorry about that.
I think that's a very reasonable request under the circumstances. And since we have no more public comment, I'm gonna turn it over to Madam Clerk, and you can continue the other slides. Thank you.
Thank you. And I did just need to mention, we did receive one emailed public comment, and that was from Serena Fish, and it was provided to council earlier today. So back to finish the recognitions, and sorry again for that delay. The others were for the Bloomington Normal Public Transportation System Board, that was Linda Foster. For the Board of Fire and Police Commissioners, Levi Sturgeon. Citizens Beautification Committee, Eric Hansen, sorry, Cody Hendricks. Human Relations Commission, Nisha Carey. The Planning Commission, John Dannenberger. Property Maintenance Review Board, Kate Brunk and Noah Tang. Transportation Commission, Alicia Sanders. And we've got one last slide. And let's see, so the Human Relations Commission, that's Kiran Conan, Gary McGinnis, Rhonda Smith. The Japan Sister City Committee, Brenda Guest, Kyle Silver. Library Board of Trustees, John Arganzano. Katrina Parker, Alicia Whitworth. Planning Commission, Thomas Krieger, Mark Mullinak. Property Maintenance Review Board, John Capadice, Robert Garcia. Rodney Smithson. Public Safety and Community Relations Board, Robert Bosquez. Janet Lancaster. Police Pension Board, Scott Rathbun. Technology Commission, Jacob Erlich. Robbie Dury. And Transportation Commission, John Corey. And again, these were appointments that were made in March and April.
Thank you so much, Madam Clerk. And thank you for making the correction. Next, we move to our consent agenda. Are there any items that any member of the city council would like to have removed from the consent agenda for separate consideration? Okay. Hearing or seeing none, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
It looks, it looks like.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Mayor, sorry, I didn't know if you could see the panelists. We do have Jeff Crable with his hand up and also Jen Corio.
Oh, okay. Jen, I couldn't see. Jeff, did you have your hand up? Jeff, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I would like to remove from the consent agenda items 8E and 8G.
8E and 8G?
Correct.
Okay. Anybody else?
Yes, Mayor, I was gonna pull those same ones, and I'd also like to add item C, like cat.
Okay. So. Councilmember Corio is pulling item 8C in addition to the items E and G. So is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented with the exception of items 8CE and G? Moved by, wow, I see that hand, Alderman, Councilmember Boland, and second by Councilmember Bray. Sorry, Maboka, you're just too slow there. Sorry. Anyway, Madam Clerk, would you call the roll? Again, this is to approve the consent agenda as presented with the exception of the items that have been pulled, C, E, and G.
All right, Councilmember Mathie.
Yes.
Councilmember Boland.
Yes.
Councilmember Milowambe.
Yes.
Councilmember Emig.
Yes.
Councilmember Painter.
Yes.
Councilmember Corio.
Yes.
Councilmember Black.
Yes.
Councilmember Crable.
Yes.
Councilmember Bray.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Motion, Carrie, I'm gonna start with the Councilmember Crable. You had pulled items E and G. Let's start with item 8E, and I'm gonna turn that over to you. Your concerns or questions? Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. So, and I've addressed this with Tim and gotten some information from Kevin, and I think it's just good for, you know, the public to know and with regard to, you know, we're switching from an F-150-sized vehicle to an F-350. And so I'm assuming that's a higher cost as well as maybe higher mileage. I know that Kevin had mentioned, maybe there's some additional heavy equipment, you know, to be, you know, that may be used for that, but wonder if the F-150 could still do the job and we can save a little bit of money. So I would ask that of Kevin, if he could, he could address that.
Okay. And you, just to clarify, you did ask him this before the meeting, too?
Correct.
Okay. Kevin?
Yeah, so the change in vehicles, the F-150 is a pickup truck, standard half-ton, the F-350 being a one-ton truck that's gonna have a utility body on it so that the crews can take the parts and tools with them and have them available when they're working up around the lake. This is a Lake Bloomington vehicle that services all around the lake, the different properties. And so right now, there's a little bit more running back and forth to get stuff with the pickup truck. With the utility body truck, they can carry the stuff with them, so there's not as much running back and forth, and they're more efficient as a service of the properties around Lake Bloomington.
Thanks, Kevin. I appreciate that. And so with that, I would move to approve item 8E on the consent agenda.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Bray, I see. There's any other discussion? Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Councilmember Mathie.
Yes.
Councilmember Boland.
Yes.
Councilmember Milowambe.
Yes.
Councilmember Emig.
Yes.
Councilmember Painter.
Yes.
Councilmember Corio.
No.
Councilmember Black.
Yes.
Councilmember Crable.
Yes.
Councilmember Bray.
Yes.
Okay. There's one name to announce, Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Corio.
Okay. And then we'll move right along, and this one was also pulled by Councilmember Crable, and that's item 8G, as in George. Councilmember Crable, you got the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. So this is to replace some lights in Grossinger Arena, LED lights. And I appreciate Russ Waller's response to my questions, and don't know if he's on the line tonight. And I understand that, you know, we've already purchased the lights, you know, there's some code issues involved. We could lose the state discount, but I understand that, that those discounts are typically available every year. And so I'm just wondering, with the arena probably being closed for use for the foreseeable future, if this is money that we could, in essence, save at this particular time?
I think we could turn this over to Mr. Gleason. Can, Mr. Gleason, Tim, can you maybe clarify that?
Thank you, Mayor. Actually, Alderman Crable did reach out with these questions, and I do have Russ on the line to speak to this. And actually, and that's fine, Mayor. And then real quick, in addition to probably the comments that Russ is gonna share, we also think that this is an opportunity because the venue is empty and will allow for the work to be done a little bit sooner. But Russ, you're muted. If you could respond to Alderman Crable.
All right, Councilmember Crable, do appreciate the questions. And as indicated in my email I sent to you, we had started this project quite some time ago before the COVID crisis, and we purchased those lights with council approval. And then the next step was to go ahead and award a contract to get them installed. So the lights are currently on the floor of the arena, waiting installation. The project does clear up a code violation that was brought to our attention some time ago, and that's to install aisle lighting. So anytime there's an event, the guests can actually see the aisles and the stairways and be able to enter and exit the venue safely. So this will clear up that issue. And then the project also clears up another safety concern, which is the IATSE staff use the beams on the roof to walk on and then hang for rigging. So any event that's there when they need to hang lighting and other issues for the show, they have to walk those beams. And currently, the conduit are on top of those beams. So this project will take care of that by removing those conduit and installing new conduit below the beams for the new lights. So given those two issues, we would still like to move forward with this, obviously with council approval. To speak to the incentive, we do use the chance of getting it if we do not complete this project by December 31 of this year. And as you had said, this rebate is available every year. You have to apply for it. You do have to go through the process. We've already done that. We've already received approval for the rebate. Not that it could not be requested again. It is not a guarantee that you'll get this rebate, but given the fact that we've already been approved for it, we'd still like to move forward. And then the other issue, I think we'd already talked about, and that's the lights are already purchased. And so quite honestly, this is an opportune time for us, with the arena closed, to get this work done. If we delay and we wait till the arena reopens and has events, we actually, we're looking about a month, a month and a half, maybe even two months to do all this work. So with the work that we gotta do, we would actually have to shut the arena back down for that period of time to do this work. So to me, we're really losing an opportunity with the arena shutdown right now that we may not get back and may actually cost some potential shows and revenue from any shows that might get booked in the future. The last thing I would add is there is some energy reduction savings to the tune of about $30,000 a year, that the sooner we can get this installed, the quicker we can get that savings in play. Any questions?
Thank you, Russ.
Rest of everything, I think you have.
Yeah. Yeah, Russ, thank you so much. And I think that one point that, you know, the arena would have to actually close once it's reopened again, that's a significant point. I think it's just good that we justify this, especially the concerns that people always have with spending additional money on the arena. But with what you've said, it makes really good sense, I think, to spend this. I'm gonna move to approve item 8G.
Okay. Is there a second?
Mayor, we do also have Councilmember Mathie with his hand up.
Oh, okay. Just, I'm gonna wait for a second on this motion. Is there a second? Second by Councilmember Black. And Councilmember Mathie, you wanted to speak to this?
Yeah. I'm sorry, Russ, you broke up on my side for just a second. What was the amount of money that you expected in energy savings? I know that I think it's gonna be about 60% more efficient with the LED, but the number you said broke up for me for just a second.
I think it was $30,000. Is that right, Russ? Russ?
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay.
$30,000?
The $30,000 is an approximate estimate of the annual savings of less energy that we would see for these, this entire lighting project.
Okay, thank you. Anything else? Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Mathie.
Yes.
Councilmember Boland.
Yes.
Councilmember Milowambe.
Yes.
Councilmember Emig.
Yes.
Councilmember Painter.
Yes.
Councilmember Corio.
Yes.
Councilmember Black.
Yes.
Councilmember Crable.
Yes.
Councilmember Bray.
Yes.
There are no names to announce, Madam Clerk. We're gonna move to item 8C on the consent agenda, and that is, was pulled by Councilmember Corio. Jen?
Thank you. Yeah, just a couple of questions. And primarily, this comes from, you know, this notion in the packet that we're, you know, gotta put some cushion in there because we fear that construction costs may be going up. You know, I raise a flag because, you know, this is the opposite of what I'm hearing from folks in the construction industry. So I just wanted to clarify why it is that we're projecting that for this project and whether that's gonna be consistent with other projects. I mean, I think that if the grant is $200,000, if I'm not mistaken, that's what we should try to stick with. But also just curious about how we came up with the $30,000 figure and where that comes from. So just a couple of questions on this item.
Mr. Gleason, did you wanna handle that, or do you wanna move to somebody else?
Actually, thank you, Mayor. I'm going to, I still have Kevin on the line. I'm gonna let you respond to that, Kevin.
Kevin?
Yes, thank you, Council. I'd like to point out that when we bid the Public Works contracts, like the sidewalk contract, it's what we call a unit price. And so we get prices per square foot of sidewalk for removal and replacement and that sort of thing. And so, you know, we wanna leverage that $200,000 grant the best we can, and whatever the bids come in at is what we award at. And we just wanna make sure that we can put in as much quantity as we can and still be able to award the project. IDOT allows, you know, like a 10% variation, so that'd be up to $220,000 is an automatic approval, but we'd have to have the money to cover that difference if that came to be. We don't necessarily have to spend that when we actually get out in the field, but we know that there's a great need around this school. There's more sidewalk that needs to be done than what the $200,000 grant will cover. So we just wanna make sure we bid it high enough, the worst thing for our community would be to get a sidewalk contracted at $170,000 and leave $30,000 of safe routes to school money unspent. So we just wanna make sure we have enough to cover. We wanna, like I said, use the whole $200,000 grant opportunity for the community. Just because we award a contract at, say, $220,000 or $225,000 doesn't mean that we have to spend all that money. doesn't mean that we have to spend all that money, because when we get actu- actually out in the field and, and do the work, there's usually some adjustments made anyway, but since it's a, a state, uh, letting, we need to make sure we have enough money to cover, uh, what we're actually bidding. And, and like I said, the, it has to do with how much sidewalk we're actually able to replace, and we wanna leverage that two hundred thousand to the best of our ability for our community.
Thank you. Jen?
Thank you. Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to approve as presented.
Okay, is there a second to, uh, Councilmember Correa's motion? Uh, count, second by.
Second.
Matthew, and Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
I had a quick question, if I could, sorry.
I didn't see your, uh, hand, so go ahead.
So are, is this all about replacing sidewalks? Are we, uh, going to be, uh, adding any sidewalks?
There, there's a, a small addition. Most of it is, uh, upgrades to sidewalk that, uh, doesn't meet current ADA standards, including the sidewalk ramps and so forth. So there's, it, it's mainly a sidewalk replacement around Sheridan School. Um, there's very little new, new sidewalk.
Thank you, Kevin. Okay, now Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Councilmember Matthew.
Yes.
Councilmember Bowlin.
Yes.
Councilmember Milowambe.
Yes.
Councilmember Emig.
Yes.
Councilmember Painter.
Yes.
Councilmember Correa.
Yes.
Councilmember Black.
Yes.
Councilmember Crable.
Yes.
Councilmember Bray.
Yes.
Motion carries. There are no names to announce, Madam Clerk. We move to, uh, our regular agenda. Item nine A, consideration and action on an ordinance authorizing boundary modifications to the area known as the Bloomington-Normal Enterprise Zone. And this is, of course, the, uh, Ferrero expansion and the approval amendment to the intergovernmental agreement as requested by the Economic Development Council, and we do have the, uh, head of our Economic Development Council, Mr. Hogan, on the line as well. So, um, I'm gonna start with a, a brief presentation. I'm gonna turn this over to our city manager and, uh, Mr. Patrick Hoben. Mr. Gleason, you wanna start?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Uh, huge opportunity for us, uh, with, uh, Ferrero, uh, looking at the, uh, expansion that, uh, what the community knows as the, uh, Bike Candy, uh, location, uh, south of town. Uh, I'm going to, uh, hand the baton off to, uh, Melissa first, and then she'll hand it off to, uh, Patrick. But if I'm not mistaken, uh, the approval of this really puts us, uh, as a, uh, strong competitor as there's, uh, two other sites that are being considered by the company. So huge opportunity for us. Melissa?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Uh, as the city manager mentioned, uh, we've been working with, uh, the EDC and DCEO uh, to help support the retention and expansion efforts of Ferrero within the city of Bloomington. Um, as you know, Bloomington has a long history of candy production dating back to the Paul Bike Candy Company that was founded in downtown Bloomington in eighteen ninety-two. So we are extremely pleased and very excited that Ferrero has decided to continue that tradition, uh, within Bloomington, and, uh, including them in the enterprise zone will assist in better positioning the fifty-three-year-old Bloomington facility. So with that, I will go ahead and turn it over to Patrick Hoben, CEO of the EDC.
Thank you, Melissa. Uh, as Melissa mentioned, um, we've been working with, uh, Melissa and Austin for a while with Ferrero on this, and it's, uh, it's always nice to get a new company to come to town, but it's even better to see one of your own grow from within. So that's, that's why I think this is so cool, and it's not, this isn't a small expansion either. This is a, a big investment, and, uh, these are good jobs, too. Uh, so for us, uh, this is a zone that's a statewide program. They've got these all across the state. Uh, we still have room in our zone to expand, and this is just a great opportunity to expand a current zone that we already have and include a company, um, that probably should have been included in the first go-around. Um, so now we can go ahead and make that correction, then, uh, get them to grow here, hopefully.
Okay.
Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Uh, questions of, uh, Mr. Hogan or anyone else?
We have, uh, Councilmember Crable with his hand up.
Councilmember Crable.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, and, and so, uh, I, I guess first, um, Melissa or Patrick, if, my first question is, if you could just explain for the public, I, I don't know if everybody understands the role of DCEO and how that works with, uh, the EDC and local communities.
Sure. So the, uh, the zone itself is actually a state incentive that's managed by DCEO. Um, we, uh, the EDC is a designated administrators of the zone. So we partner, um, with the city of Bloomington, Town of Normal, McLean County, Ford County, and Gibson City. All five government entities came together and made an application back in two thousand and sixteen for this zone. Uh, so we are the ones that administer the zone. We issue the, uh, certificates for the sales tax exemption. Uh, so if a company is within the zone itself and they're getting ready to make an investment, uh, they, they start with their local municipality, they get that building permit, and they bring it into us, and, um, we issue a, uh, and a certificate to receive sales tax exemption off of building materials, um, for it. But it, it is a state program. We're just the ones that administer it. Uh, right now, this is part of the process, so we need to have all five taxing entities approve this ordinance, and then it has to go to the state for final approval to amend their zone.
Uh, thanks, Patrick. And then, um, I emailed Tim and eventually I got to you, um, with regard to, you know, what kind of a cost-benefit analysis that could be done. Um, I, I know you, uh, you gave some numbers, you know, we're losing, uh, three and a half percent sales tax on, you know, construction materials. We've got a potential sixty to seventy million dollar investment with forty to fifty jobs created. Um, do you have kind of a rough ballpark of, of, of kind of that, that analysis? Um, uh, and then, do we keep track of other enterprise zone projects and ultimately how much that we lose in, in sales tax versus the benefit? Do we ever go back and do that kind of thing?
We track the investment. We track the jobs, uh, created and retained. Um, I'd have to go through the state to see if that actually pull where, uh, the materials were bought. Um, so for this one, there's gonna be a lot of equipment, and highly unlikely that that's gonna be purchased here in Bloomington or Normal. Uh, so the three point five percent is in theory, if they purchase the materials here in town that we're losing. Otherwise, um, it's from somewhere else. Uh, the, but a rough, um, estimate that I did, it really depends on that sixty to seventy million dollars, how much of that is going to be in the building versus the interior? Um, with that, we have to figure out what the assessment is. So you could either do a two-third material or a one-third material, whenever we're talking material versus labor, um, and then, uh, run that three point five percent off of that. So you're looking at anywhere between seven hundred thousand or, um, uh, one point four for an investment. And yet even then, though, you're looking at a total of a sixty million dollar project, that's like one point two percent coverage, when normally we would suggest anywhere up to twenty percent of a project. Um, at some point, I'd love to go back and run an analysis on every incentive deal in McLean County over the years, just so we can get this incentive policy lined out, because right now it's still a, I, I, I wanna know what's expected of us, I guess. So we all know how we can sell our community, um, what kind of return that we're looking for. Uh, but with this, if you're gonna do seven hundred thousand dollars for a sixty million dollar deal, um, you're looking at factoring in the jobs. So direct job-wise, I ran these through N-Plan. Um, we're looking at fifty jobs, indirect jobs will be twenty-eight more. Those are for suppliers for, um, Ferrero, and then induced would be, uh, caused by the employees of the direct and indirect shopping locally and creating twenty more jobs for a total of ninety-nine. So you slam that all together, and you get a wage impact of about four point five million dollars. That's every year. Then from there, you can throw in, uh, consumer expenditures, so shopping locally, restaurant-wise, um, even a percentage of those that would buy homes. Tie that all together, run that through, uh, economic impact for property taxes, sales taxes, uh, even packaged liquor. Um, throw all that in, uh, just for Bloomington itself, I think it's about a hundred and three thousand a year. Um, that's totally dependent upon the assessment. So it really depends on, you know, whenever the assessment's done and, uh, what tax rate's on there, that's gonna be the biggest determination on what property taxes are received. So until we find that out, that's gonna make it hard to project what this is gonna be.
Uh, a, a great, great, um, answer, uh, Patrick, very detailed. I really, really appreciate that. Thank you.
Sure. Isn't it just to, to clarify, Patrick, uh, in terms of any of the materials, but for the investment, right? We wouldn't be seeing any of that money anyway. We're not, we're not giving anybody one penny upfront.
Right. That's why this is a little bit of a different on doing a, uh, cost-benefit or economic impact analysis, um, similar to sometimes when we do TIFs, unless you do TIF money upfront, we're not really out anything right now. This is all based off of them going through with this, and then future money that could have been bought here, um, but it's not necessarily going to. So it's not like we're bonding for this project.
So i- in the absence of their private investment, we would get nothing.
Correct.
And we would not have the jobs, and we would not have the economic incentives.
Right, correct.
Anything else on this?
Mayor, you do have, uh, Councilmember Emig, Correa, and Bowlin with their hands up.
Sorry, Jen. Julie, sorry.
Yeah, that's all right. Thank you, Mayor, um, and thank you, Patrick and Melissa, for presenting on this. I intend to vote for it this evening. Um, I wanted to follow up a little bit on, um, Council Alderman Crable's, um, comment. I look forward to really digging into more analyses. Um, I love the data, and I reached out to Patrick a little bit earlier today just to, to ask him if, if, um, there is some plan underway to, to do this kind of analysis of the impact of, of these sorts of, um, tax incentives over time. And I look forward to, um, to getting, getting more information about that, so we can make better decisions going forward. And my second question, um, has to do just with, uh, Patrick, for you to comment on the, the feasibility of, uh, public labor, um, agreement, perhaps attached to something like this. I mean, do you see that there's a potential to work in partnership with, um, other municipality like Normal, um, to come up with something that, that we can broker together, and thank you.
Sure. Um, for a sales tax exemption, that's normally not attached. If we start working on the property tax abatement, which I would love to have in place, uh, because right now, we're the ones that do the audits for, uh, Brant and Rivian. Uh, Brant is a seven-year deal, Rivian's a five-year deal. I would like to get McLean, everybody on the same page as far as what a package looks like, and then from there, um, work with, um, hopefully incentivizing the use of, um, local talent. So if they can actually prove that they're hiring from within, I'd recommend extending the incentive for an extra couple of years, because we can project a bigger ripple. Um, so it's, but we have to figure out, how can we get, I don't know what, five or six taxing bodies all on the same page? Same thing with our economic impact analysis, uh, looking at the different ways that people do, and we have to agree on one template. That way, we can compare apples to apples, both incentive-wise and impact-wise going forward. But yeah, I definitely, the, the bigger a company can prove that the ripple's gonna come back to our community, I think the more that we should offer them.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Julie, did you have anything else?
No, I'm, I'm good. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, this is really, really an exciting project, and I wanna thank Tim, Patrick, uh, Hoben, and, uh, Melissa, and our entire team for this. This is really, really a win-win for everybody in our, in our community. And as you say, continues our tradition of candy in Bloomington, that I'm sure we're all pro candy. Uh, a- at this point, do I have a motion, uh, to approve this as?
All right, Mayor, we actually have, uh, Councilmember Correa, Bowlin, and Matthew with their hands up.
Really? Oh, see, I, I, I'm unable to see that. Okay, so Councilmember Correa, and then Bowlin?
And then Matthew.
Okay, we'll start with, uh, in that order then. Correa, Bowlin, and Matthew.
Thank you. Um, I think maybe I, I didn't quite understand, uh, your response, Patrick, about why a project labor agreement isn't possible as we're talking about, um, upcoming construction on the, on the expansion of, of this project.
So most time, whenever those are put into place, it's attached to an incentive agreement, so that it's a property tax abatement. For this, what, for what we're voting on right now, we're just amending the shape of the zone to include them. After that's included, um, then incentive's already in place, so we're not really voting on an incentive right now. If this was a property tax abatement, um, i- i- an individual incentive for Ferrero, it would be different, but because we're just amending a zone that already offers it, um, it.
Yes.
It wouldn't be attached.
Okay, got it. Just wanted to clarify that. Um, my, my other question is, uh, I think you mentioned, uh, about fifty jobs, um, and them being good quality jobs. Um, what do you know about the, the quality of jobs? Like, can, can you talk a little bit more about what you know?
Just based off the industry itself, industry itself, that they're manufacturing jobs, and I'm, I'm really pushed for manufacturing in central Illinois, especially with what's going on now, to try to pull those, um, back. Uh, Illinois has a big campaign going on right now about Illinois-made, um, that we have really good quality projects made here, and manufacturing normally pays more, um, than some of your standard jobs that are out there.
Okay, thank you so much, Patrick.
Thank you. Next, uh, Councilmember Bowlin.
Uh, yeah, I wanna thank the staff that worked on this. I think it's great. I really appreciate Patrick with his numbers, because I'm a number person, and I really do think that this is gonna be a, a, a great return on investment. And the best part is, it's just down the street from where I live in War Two. And, um, and it's nice to see manufacturing brought in to diversify the, um, employment opportunities. And, um, the other thing, this is just a minor correction. Um, War Two is located in Unit Five School District rather than District Eighty-Seventh, so whatever property tax assessment would apply to that, but I'm good.
Thank you very much. Uh, and then finally, uh, Councilmember Matthew.
Uh, yeah, uh, Patrick, thank you for this. I appreciate it. Mayor, it looks like Mboka wants to speak after me. He's got his hand up.
Thank you.
Um, uh, Patrick, I was just thinking as you're, um, you know, you and I have talked before that how it would be beneficial to see, um, kind of a detailed analysis of the various TIF districts that have been around, existed in the community as well. So having those with the analysis of, um, different incentive packages would be good. And, um, just as a, 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 maybe an idea how to get there, is there, maybe there's some partnership opportunities with the School of Business at ISU, because, um, Lord knows that they made us do enough, um, future value analysis is when I was going through all the accounting and finance classes. So, um, you know, there's a lot of, uh, talent there that maybe we, you, we could, uh, actually give them real-world projects that mean more than some nonsense written into a textbook, so just a thought.
Completely agree, and yes, we have talked about that before. That's why, uh, the EDC actually purchased N-Plan, because that's the software that they use over there, uh, so that we can, uh, team up with Frank's team and, uh, use as much, uh, students as possible to, uh, you know, help us run this, these kinds of incentives.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you, Patrick. And then, uh, last but not least, Councilmember?
Okay, thank you. Thank you so much, uh, Patrick, Melissa, and Tim, uh, for working on what I consider to be a sweet deal. Fun intended. I'm sorry. I, I had to. I'm sorry. Um, and, and I, and I think i- it is actually a, a really nice opportunity, particularly given the time that we find ourselves in, you know, to, uh, we've been in the midst of a lot of bad economic news, and to have this happen at this particular time, I think, is, is great for the community. So thank you so much for your work on this. It's really encouraging. Um, the one thing that I wanted to ask, and I, and I can't remember, Patrick, if you and I have spoken about this, but I, I, I think i- i- in general, uh, my, my concern with how we do these kinds of things is the, the amount of times that we have to go to different bodies to get it approved, you know? And I just, I kinda feel like it, it really slows down the process considerably. And if we're dealing with, you know, a particular business, let's say, that was, um, outside of the country, um, that I think would, you know, could be, uh, could make us lose our competitive advantage, you know? If they, they have another opportunity elsewhere, uh, and they're able to complete these things faster. So is, would there be a way for, for us to, to really find a way to coordinate with all the different bodies that have to approve this to make the time shorter? You know, instead of going several weeks, you know, to maybe one week?
Yes. Um, yes, and we did talk about that, and I need you to keep that in mind whenever we come back to discuss, um, just an overall McLean County incentive policy, uh, because it's something that we have seen in other communities. Um, I used to have one when I was indicator, and I came here, and it wasn't here, and I was like, oh, it's so much easier to have this one policy where we all agree. Uh, so yeah, if, that's something that we'll work on, hopefully, within the next couple of months, um, getting everybody back together and making that a priority again.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. At this point, is there a motion to approve or disapprove? A moved, uh, moved approval by, uh, Councilmember Milowambe, second by Councilmember Bray. I saw her hand up, unless that was not accurate. That's accurate. Okay. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Matthew.
Yes.
Councilmember Bowlin.
Yes.
Councilmember Milowambe.
Yes.
Councilmember Emig.
Yes.
Councilmember Painter.
Yes.
Councilmember Correa.
No.
Councilmember Black.
Yes.
Councilmember Crable.
Yes.
Councilmember Bray.
Yes.
Thank you very much. Uh, Madam Clerk, the, uh, motion carries. There's one day to announce. Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. The motion carries. There's one need to announce.
Councilmember Corio.
Okay. Thank you so much. And we move right along to item 9B. Consideration and potential action regarding ordinance 2020-18 and ordinance declaring the local emergency to the COVID-19 virus and enacting various emergency measures, including consideration of an ordinance at a new section 2Q regarding liquor license fees and a new section 2R regarding COVID-19 grants as requested by the legal department. And I'm going to go ahead and turn this over to Mr. Gleason. We have a five-minute budget. We'll see if we exceed that for both the presentation and discussion. Mr. Gleason.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This shouldn't take this long. This is the placeholder that we have for every council agenda where we might expand the emergency order related to COVID-19. There's two things to consider tonight. We had a tavern owner reach out that made the decision during COVID-19, this pandemic, not to be open and do the curbside liquor sales or delivery. And this is just something that we didn't consider as staff and makes sense. So what we're looking at for those, the liquor establishments that are not operating during COVID, we would prorate the liquor license fee for the amount of time that they are not open during the pandemic. The second item would give me authority to sign off, be the signatory on grants that we receive. We've experienced a couple and they've been public safety, a couple of COVID-19-related grant opportunities and police and then one in fire. And it just would expedite the process to allow me to sign off on it. I know that we have talked in the past about the CDBG grant, the CARES Act money. This is not a grant that would fall into that category. These are these one-off type of grants that are popping up and we've already experienced two. Again, one in police and one in fire. I'll take any questions, Mayor.
Questions of Mr. Gleason.
Mayor, there are no hands up. It looks like maybe Jamie.
Yeah.
Tim, can you give us an idea of how many bars/taverns that this proration might affect? I mean, is it like five or 50 or, you know, do you have any idea right now?
I, I can actually help answer that question. So we actually have 176 liquor licenses throughout the city. There are 31 currently registered to do the curbside carryout or delivery. And so it's, we really will have to do an analysis a little bit further, but I can tell you that right now 31 are participating in that program and for total we have 176.
So we potentially have 140 different liquor license fees that we're going to be prorating for six to 10 weeks, whatever the number works out to be.
Correct. And our, our most expensive liquor license is $27.50. And so when you do the math by the number of days in the year, it's somewhere around $7, $8 a day that we'd be looking at for the reimbursement.
If I, if I could clarify here for, to Alderman Matthew's question, is that we have more than 31 places, including like, oh, not, not just liquor stores, but convenience stores, right? This is actually just a number of people who have, or just a number of establishments that have participated or that have petitioned to do, deliver your curbside, is that right?
That's the number that we currently have registered. I actually was just starting to put together a list to see. We do have like Bennys, Friertuck, Krogers, other facilities such as those that have not registered under the emergency order that we're referencing. So there's 31 currently participating in the curbside that would be taverns, restaurants or clubs. And then there's a handful of others that just naturally fall under the code because they're over 10,000 square feet.
So things like Jewel or Schnucks and Hy-Vee are also, so it's, we're probably well under 140, but we still, a majority probably of our liquor licenses, it's probably safe to say, will get some kind of rebate.
Correct. And, and the language does say that they have to be closed continually for 30 days to qualify also. So I think that they'll, you know, that'll have a few others also. But we're, we're running numbers and I can get some information out to that, to you all when we have that available.
Thank you. Any other questions? Is there a motion to approve as presented? Moved by Alderman Matthew, second by Alderman Black and, and several other seconds. Any other questions? Saying none, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Matthew.
Yes.
Councilmember Bolan.
Yes.
Councilmember Milowamway.
Yes.
Councilmember Emig.
Yes.
Councilmember Painter.
Yes.
Councilmember Corio.
Yes.
Councilmember Black.
Yes.
Councilmember Crable.
Yes.
Councilmember Bray.
Yes.
Motion carried. There are no needs to announce, Madam Clerk. We're going to turn it over to our city manager in terms of city manager discussion, although we do appreciate your earlier COVID update. Mr. Gleason.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Not sure what slide was going to be first, if it's Census or Farmers Market. And here we go, Census 2020. We're just asking that everybody either do this online. There's a number of flyers that you can log into website and take care of the census. I know that we've said this and we're going to be saying it more down the home stretch. So critical for us in this region and for the state of Illinois. So. Next item is Farmers Market. And we're going to be doing shopping online with curbside pickup until we reopen and are able to have a public downtown Farmers Market. But this, this one that we had this past week, 23,000 plus in sales. These things are going very well and Melissa Han and her team have this down to a science really as far as the pickup and the online procedure. Last item that I had, I wanted to recognize our very own Jeanie Hamilton, our library executive director. She was actually just voted into a three-year term as the president of the Illinois Library Association. So that's off to her. Quite an accomplishment for Jeanie. That's it, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. And again, congratulations to Jean and we're all clapping on her behalf. I did want to call attention to not just a day, but a week because they deserve it. Our first responders, Happy International Firefighters Week. And this is their, their recognition week and we're very, very proud of, obviously of our firefighters in our community and throughout the, and throughout the world, actually, and our 911 responders. But I also did want to clarify that, something that Mr. Gleason alluded to in his earlier COVID response in that I did join a group of mayors in a conference, actually on conference call, excuse me, on Friday morning throughout central Illinois. And actually, I guess it did include a couple of county board chairmen and women. And we did come up with a, what I think we could say is a data-driven request by the governor to create a separate region for central Illinois, heart of Illinois is what we're calling it, HOI. And that's based on the number of hospital beds that we have, the number of COVID incidents that we've had and that our 11 counties have more in common with each other than they do in the, the regions that originally drawn. So this is not to clarify some sort of go-it-alone kind of approach or request. It is a request for the governor to reconsider creating a separate region for central Illinois, which would allow us to move at a different pace than other regions that, including one that, that we're attached to in the current plan. So I just wanted to clarify that. And at this point, council members, council member comments.
Mayor, you have Councilmember Crable with his hand up and now Bolan.
Okay, Councilmember Crable, you, you can start and then Councilmember Bolan.
Thank you, Mayor. And, and Tim, I wanted to ask about your COVID-19 update. I think you could just confirm me, we actually have the additional CDBG funds. At this point, they've been dispersed.
Mr. Tim, did you want to clarify that?
Sorry about that, but if, if you wouldn't mind, ask that question one more time, Alderman Crable.
Yeah, and there's two questions, I guess. One was, it sounded like what you said, that we actually have been dispersed that money by HUD. And then secondly, are the guidelines of how we can use that additional funds, are those public? That can be shared?
Heard it that time. We, we're a recipient annually to CDBG funds that we use. So it's, it's occurring all at the same time this year is what my understanding is. And then additionally, we're receiving the CARES Act COVID-19 CDBG funds that are being, to be used for this pandemic unmet needs. It is my understanding that we have not received the funds yet. It is also my understanding that the guidelines are not in place yet and we're awaiting those and plan on having a three-on-one discussion with council and then a public discussion possibly with an action item on June.
Great. Thanks, Tim. And just some, a couple of quick other additional comments, Mayor. I, I don't think we should, you know, I think we should recognize, I counted 51 people that were appointed to or reappointed to board positions and, and, you know, the city couldn't function as well unless we had volunteer serving on their boards. So I wanted to thank everyone that continues to serve on boards and commissions. Also, just wanted to point out to people that the, the library, I guess it has its own form of takeout, that you can now reserve books online, as I understand, and then they have certain times that they're open. They can go actually pick up the books or other items and, and those times are on the library's website. Just wanted to also encourage people, I've heard from different community members that, you know, there's, hasn't always been proper social distancing at some of our establishments that are open or wearing mask. And I think if we want to be in the position that the mayor wants us in and we want to be in to potentially open things up earlier than others, I think we all need to continue to comply with those requirements. And I really like kind of us working with other communities on that. I had a town hall this past Monday. I'm trying to have those on our off, off weeks. And there were a lot of questions about when we were reopening by my constituents. And then they also had a lot of questions about brush and bulk pickup. And so I think that both of those questions were answered, you know, pretty well. And then just lastly, I, I ask questions a lot pre-meeting and, and always appreciate the staff that, that respond to me very, very timely. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Crable. Finally, Councilmember Bolan.
Yeah, I'm, I'm really glad that Mayor Renner, you are working with the area mayors. I've been following the, the data myself because I have a background in infectious disease. And I've actually been pushing to move it forward earlier, but I'm very glad you're moving it, addressing it and asking the mayor or asking the governor to allow us to open up here. I think that we're ready. And the other thing is, there is a, that project for low-income housing that's located on Lincoln Avenue and Four Seasons Road, that's in Jeff's Ward. They have the big trucks out there and it looks like the project's going to be starting. So that's good news. That's all I have to say.
Anybody?
You do have Councilmember Corio with her hand up.
Councilmember Corio, you go, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor Renner. Just a quick reminder that there will be a community council meeting this Thursday at 6 o'clock, as is the case every month, but it won't be at First Christian Church. It will be online. And so please go to my Facebook page and look for that Zoom link later that week, later this week. The other thing is I just wanted to lift up the amazing work that the McLean County COVID-19 mutual aid team has been doing. And for those who may not be familiar, it's a service for people who are self-isolating and who are either over 60, have a compromised immune system or have, have other factors that keep them from being able to go out and run errands. There, they have a hotline, the number is 309-839-9496. And I have just been super, super proud at the way that this, this group of folks has pulled together. And this is the brainchild of Tori, our very own Tori Moray, whose birthday it is today. So just really want to lift up that work and, and let her know that we, you know, she, she plays a big role in making sure that our community is, is safe. So really, really appreciate everybody who stepped up in this way.
Thank you. And we want to have a happy birthday to her and happy birthday to somebody else and that's you in a couple of days. And it's your 30th and that's a kind of a milestone for this.
Wow, you're really putting me on blast out here, okay? Let me just enjoy the last six days of my twenties.
Well, it's important for this council because it's the first time in years that we're going to have some, nobody on the council below 30 since Scott Black was elected when he was 11.
Oh, boy.
You can, you can sing me happy birthday next Monday because it's next Monday. So. Terrible singing.
You don't want my singing. You'll age another decade. Anyway, thank you so much. And if that's, if I don't hear anybody else, Madam Clerk, can we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
So moved by Councilmember Corio, second by Councilmember Milowamway. All in favor, see this by saying aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? You can feel free to stay on if you want. Okay, thank you very much. I very much appreciate it. Thank you, staff. Thank you, everybody.
Hi, everybody.
Good night.
Good night.
Peace out.